...in front of you and speak clearly into the microphone, make sure the microphone is turned on. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting is March 1st, 2016 at 7:00 PM in this Matthew Thornton room. Let's see, I will appoint Nelson for Mike, Jeff for Lynn, so we're all voting members tonight, and there are six of us, so that's a quorum. With that, let's turn to Planning and Zoning Administrators' report. Robert, what do you have for us?
All I have tonight is the Regional Impact Recommendation for Prime Alternative Treatment Center, and the recommendation from staff is that the project does not meet the criteria for regional impact.
Is there any discussion by members of the board?
Nope.
What's the whittle of the board with respect to the staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation that the prime treatments facility does not require regional notification.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Six, zero, zero for the staff's recommendation. Robert, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Any questions by members of the board for staff? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three on our agenda, which is Northview Homes LLC as the applicant and owner, and this is a pre-submission hearing for conceptual four-lot minor subdivision, the parcels located at 190 Babusick Lake Road in the R Residential District, tax map 5B lot 045. Now, the proposed property, and that's going to be discussed here, abuts my home, and as a result, I will recuse myself and turn over the gavel to our good secretary here. Go sit in the audience and watch.
As an abutter, Mr. Chairman, I presume you are allowed to actually comment?
I could comment, but I must recuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, name is Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services, representing Northview Homes and Development in this application, and this is indeed a preliminary submission discussion, nothing binding, just some information shared by us, and hopefully some good feedback and comments by you. The property in question is known as Lot 5B 45. It's situated south and west of a curve in Babusick Lake Road, opposite Mitchell Street, just north of Marty Drive, and it's bounded on the west by Old Blood Road Classics right-of-way. You can see the neighborhood, this is a GIS image, you can see the neighborhood's entirely otherwise built-up residential homes, single-family, of various lot sizes. This parcel that we're here to discuss is nine acres, and I'll switch over to a more specific view. The land itself, again, fronting on Babusick Lake Road, is about 756 plus or minus lineal feet of frontage on Babusick Lake Road. The property is unique in that this long section of frontage then squeezes down to about 306 feet of width for the remainder, which all the way goes to the west to Old Blood Road. So what you have here is an interesting type of a property where the house, and in Robert's memo, in the planning board memo, you'll see he has some historical notes, it's a historic house, antique, it's currently has had some renovations done by the new owner, it's got a modern leach field, driveway is such, okay, they had on Babusick Lake Road, and all of the occupation is in this general area. Just behind the house, we have wetland, soil's still needed, wetland by our office, and this really does indeed separate the area that's used, from a house standpoint with its frontage, to really some larger area of backland that's not as easily accessible to the frontage along Babusick Lake Road, again, class five frontage. Our approach this evening, and where we're looking to get some feedback, is to consider a subdivision of this property where we'll be seeking a variance at the zoning board to create two lots that have frontage on a class five road. Now, the soils in this area are three slight soils with a frontage requirement of 150 feet. Given the frontage requirements and the unique configuration of this lot, I guess it was feasible, or could be feasible, if we came in with a road, however, once you start building a road to try to get some additional frontage, then what happens is you need more lots to then really pay for all the infrastructure with the road, and it's somewhat you can sort of chase your tail, so to speak. And this particular configuration that we're proposing is the existing house would have the majority of the frontage on Babusick Lake Road, and its lot would extend westerly to a point right here. A new lot would be created with its buildable area and access off of Babusick Lake Road here, and then the two lots that we're really in particular looking for some feedback and comment on are lots what we call 45-2 and 45-3, and we'd be seeking access and frontage along Old Blood Road. I'll pause here for a minute and go back in time to the 1970s. When Marty Drive was created, this is the first phase, if you will, 1973 of Marty Drive, and the cul-de-sac at that point, and again, the property that we're talking about is up here, highlighted in yellow, the cul-de-sac of Marty Drive bumped into what was then identified as Wilson Hill Road. Wilson Hill Road was not used or traveled, and this plan shows quite clearly is that there's a 15-foot strip for widening of Wilson Hill Road. It's a dedication for improvements in the future, proper planning, this is done in town where you have a substandard right-of-way width, oftentimes the applicants are required to dedicate a widening strip to be added to the existing right-of-way for future road purposes. So this is on the east side of what was then known as Wilson Hill Road, now we're referring to it as Old Blood Road. Move ahead, some years later, in 1978, the same thing happened as Marty Drive, if you want to call it Phase Two, Marty Drive continued to the west, out in this direction. Again, our property is highlighted yellow here, and so what happened at this time period is a full width, 50-foot wide right-of-way was dedicated and reserved for future road purposes, widening access as other lots in the area could be considered for development. What's interesting here is that this property, formerly the boroughs, now Northview Homes, had no road dedication because there was no level of development on it, so it is the sole piece from Marty Drive to the south, all the way to Babusick Lake Road to the north, that does not have any extra dedication for a consistently 50-foot wide right-of-way. In investigating some of the development options for the parcel we're considering, this 50-foot dedication is available for full road design use, usage, upgrade, and quite frankly, more dense development using a road system coming in this fashion, using that dedicated 50-foot wide right-of-way, could have been pursued. It would have been certainly more dense, it certainly would have been more impacting to the neighborhood, and instead of pushing the maximum allowable density that the land otherwise might yield, it was the desire of Northview Homes to scale it back and be more realistic as far as what is more desirable, and that is to create two-acre lots where the minimum for the soil type is 40,000, with more than, substantially more than 150-foot minimum frontage, 188 plus or minus, 199, almost 200 feet plus or minus, and simply pursue two lots on Old Blood Road accessed by a common driveway, and the driveway would then run down between the walls and access, just like any other driveway onto Marty Drive. So it's our hopes that the planning board can see that this is a reasonable approach, given the other potential more dense pursuits on the overall property, and as we get ready to go to the zoning board, we hopefully have whatever level of endorsements or comments that we could share with the zoning board at that time. It's really as straightforward as that, so I don't want to belabor the points with you, and I'd rather take any comments or any questions that the board or the public has.
Thank you very much, indeed, Ken. My colleagues, what have you got to say? Mr. Disco, I know you're doing some research this afternoon, so...
Well, I couldn't do all I wanted. I will say, first of all, wherever you got that Wilson Hill Road, that's never been Wilson Hill Road, to go way back, that's, Wilson Hill Road always went east and west and goes all the way to the Amherst Town Line.
That's per recorded plan at the registry, yeah. I didn't create it.
I am not surprised, I'm not surprised, I just mentioned that for the, correct the record. The other thing is, you're comparing this configuration to some other configuration with multiple houses on it, which is not allowable either. Our regulations require frontage on a class five road.
Correct.
Yeah, and you would be two lots on a five, on a class five road if you built the road, which was what our regulations require.
Yeah, and that's why I said we would be seeking a variance with the zoning board.
Okay, well, I don't know what great hardship would exist here, but I just wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't be, I would go on record as saying I wouldn't be in favor of doing that, thank you.
And if I could...
Please, Ken, react to each query.
Two of the, two fairly recent actions by both the planning and the zoning boards have occurred, one was on South Greater Road, where a class six right-of-way was used for access to a lot there, and over off of Woodbury, there's a railroad right-of-way where a subdivision occurred with no frontage whatsoever, not, not just on a class six road, but no frontage whatsoever, subdivision was allowed there and the variance was granted, and the planning board approved the subdivision, I think that dates back to 2003. So we're using some historical decisions to evaluate this. Now, as far as hardship goes, well, the hardship has some standards you have to meet, and that's for the zoning boards to consider. In this particular case, when situated, the property itself with the wetlands, the nature of the property, the unique characteristics, I believe there is some hardship, and I don't think that a two-lot common driveway accessed through this is an impact that's even comparable at all with a road that could be upgraded on Old Blood Road and then enter the property that way. So, for all those reasons, yes, we have to seek a variance.
Ken, you refer to this as a 50-foot public access, but in fact, the stone walls along up Old Blood Road are a lot...
Narrower than 50-foot? That's correct.
Are you thinking they're going to leave them, or are you going to start knocking stone walls down to get, make it more amenable to get in?
The intent is to leave them to the extent that DPW, from a driveway standpoint, health, safety, and welfare access standpoint, will allow them to remain. If they do have to be moved, then the idea is to move them and not just, you know, just not to remove them, but to actually physically move them. The right-of-way is 50 feet wide, the public right-of-way, the rights that could be improved fully.
I, I get your point. What's the, what is actually the width between the two stone, between the parallel stone?
It's actually, it's actually variable.
I understand, but give me the minimum and the maximum.
14 to 25 to 30 feet.
So the fire department's certainly going to have some hang-up about it if they've got to bring their apparatuses up that way.
Well, that's why I indicated that if the stone wall does have to be moved, we would move only those sections absolutely necessary, and they would be moved, not removed.
Okay, I take the point. Nobody else have any thoughts?
Where do you plan on locating the homes? Any thought to that at this point?
I personally don't have a hand in the exact location of that, I understand the question, but if you consider our proposed driveway coming in, and this would be a split in this hammerhead, if you would have to be suitable for emergency vehicle to turn around, so this is just giving an indication of where that would generally be, that would suggest that this house might be somewhere right around this label, I can't say for sure, and then this one, I'm not sure, perhaps it's roughly in the middle of the lot, I can't say with certainty, but these lots are two acres where, say, the lots on Marty Drive aren't even one acre, so there's plenty of room on these proposed lots to situate a house with keeping as much foliage as possible.
Where is the municipal run coming into this? I assume it's on Babusick Lake Road?
The municipal run?
Yeah, the public water.
At this point, I believe it's both on Marty Drive as well as Babusick Lake Road.
How do you see it running into the new homes?
I would expect, just like any other residential service, that utilities would run to the homes along the Old Blood Road right-of-way. That's not set in stone, though.
I find it interesting that you're talking about shared driveways, bearing in mind those of you who were at the last meeting will recall we had a long discussion about shared driveways, and, yeah, never mind, we might follow that one up. Is there any other members of my, any other of my colleagues want to say anything, or shall we throw it open and let the citizens, public abutters, and the general public have a go? Okay, folks, if you want to have any thoughts, now's your chance. There is a sign-up sheet there that Ken is just signing his name on, we would ask that you come up here and sign it, and then give us your point of view, and you're free to say what, well, within reason, what you would like. We're interested in your thoughts, positive or negative towards this concept that's been proposed to us this evening. I would point out that this is only a pre-submission hearing, we will not be taking any votes, so you don't think, you don't think this is the be-all and end-all. We're interested in your thoughts, Ken is particularly interested in your thoughts because it'll help him formalize a more formal presentation, which will come in due course, but both to this board and also to the zoning board. Don't all rush. Thank you, sir. Please state your name, sign, then state your name, and then tell us your thoughts.
Yeah, my name...
Sit yourself down, make comfortable, you don't have to be, Ken's, he's a nice person, you know.
So, hi, my name's Dave Pauly, I'm at 9 Marty Drive.
So, okay, we can see your house there, you're 5B-47.
Yeah, so we'd be concerned, we've had water runoff issues in the past, so with excavation and so forth, my understating is there's wetlands, so we'd be concerned about any disruption of this oil and runoff problems.
Right, I think that's a fair point, and obviously you probably are aware that before any project can goes ahead, the developer has to give undertakings, that there will be no adverse effect to your property, or in terms of anything, primarily we're thinking of water, so that if there is, he would be required to put in adequate drainage, or soil penetration, or whatever's necessary to ensure you don't see it. Is your problem serious? Is it something that's major or minor?
So, I've been regrading my property over the last two years, but yes, it's fairly significant. It's ongoing, so the way the property's designed, the way it's laid out, we have water, by nature, running from that area in the back towards my house.
Right.
So, that would be a concern.
Point taken. Thank you for your contribution.
Welcome, thank you.
Is there anybody, anybody else would like to add your thoughts? Don't all speak at once. I don't think you're getting what you need, Ken, or are you? Does the sort of silence indicate some degree of acceptance by people, those who, they just came to learn, or what do you think?
No, it's, again, abutters are always welcome.
Are you looking to speak, sir? I hear you, the gentleman behind you, are you?
Yeah, I'll come up.
Please, thank you. I saw you getting excited, so I'd invite you to say something.
Wouldn't feel like I'm a part of the meeting if I didn't come up.
No, 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 no.
Tim Lewis, 200 Babusick Lake Road, so up.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, please say what you have to say.
So, my main concern, I kind of forecasted this a while back in regards to the property. My main concern is really selfishness, but about the appearance of it, because it's a pretty big reserve back there with a lot of wildlife, and that's why I chose to move the marmac, so that's really it.
Okay, that's fair enough, you're worried about the effect on the general environment, meaning particularly the wildlife, okay. Thank you for your contribution. Mr. Pauly, do you want to, do you want to say some more?
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
How could you come forward? Unfortunately, the citizens of the town want to hear what you're saying, and if you don't talk into the microphone, it doesn't go out on the TV.
So, there, there are a lot of documented wildlife in that area.
Could you be specific for us?
So, there's a lot, there's bear, there's deer, so disrupting that would also be a concern, that we have deer regularly come in to our backyard, bear, so that would be a fairly big concern with disrupting that habitat.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to contribute? Okay, we'll close the opportunity for the public. Does anything, any of my colleagues want to add more, Mr. Seabrook?
Yeah, can you explain, is this all wooded land right now?
Yes.
These two, these two major lots, the two major lots in the back.
Yes, yes, the, the balance of the property, except for where you see the tree line surrounding the existing house, is wooded, yes.
Point it, point that out to me.
Here's the tree line that's surrounding the existing house.
You can see the tree line over there.
And then, once you cross the wetland, certainly everything to the west, heading over to Old Blood Road is wooded.
Is all wooded.
Yeah, it's fairly mature, very little understory, you could, you could see through fairly well.
This, this portion behind the existing house?
There's the, there's the existing house, that's what, after those, that tree line goes all the way around, all the way around.
Yeah, I understand. This, this one spot right here, this, this small square area...
Right here?
Yeah, no, go back, right there, right there.
Yeah.
Other than the, let's see, to the, to the, to the left of LVA, that's all wooded area in there.
Correct.
Okay, that'll always stay that way, in other words, the intent is, that would always stay like that.
For this particular lot, there's no need to occupy this area for the house lot, the proposed lot lines that separate the land is right here, this line here.
On 5B 45-1, where do you think the house would be located?
Logically, I would expect it to be here.
And then the land to the left of that would all stay wooded?
I can't say, a private landowner would have the right to, to do something over here, but it's not the intent to have access over there with a house, that would require a wetlands permit for a driveway and whatnot, it's more logical that this would be the building envelope.
Now, I was just wondering how much of the land would stay conservation, that's really what I was...
I'm not sure conservation's the right phrase, however, out of, if you take a look at, again, what's being occupied here by a house and its infrastructure at this point, there is a well, there's a leach field, there's a driveway, if you take a look at that occupation, that's about an acre or less. Again, all of these homes on Marty Drive, these are less than one-acre lots, so if you see what people are occupying with their house and driveway, and then you sort of extrapolate that type of use, or this type of use here, onto a two-acre lot, it's reasonable that out of a nine-acre parcel, if it's a four-lot subdivision, four to five acres might be occupied, therefore, four to five acres might be mainly wooded, but that's an individual landowners or homeowners' rights.
Right, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, thank you.
I was just going to ask a question back on Lot 5B 45-1-1.
Sure.
How much, how approximately the, the area of the, the front part of that where you're saying the house is going to be acreage-wise, so before that wetlands area, how big is that?
Forty thousand feet, plus or minus.
And you would think that both the well and the septic would be located?
I, I use the well example only because this existing house is antique, and there is a well here, but the, there's public water, empty water on Babusick Lake Road.
Okay.
So, you know, I was just, for a sense of scale, that's why I was relating these types of size lots and what they're currently occupying, so from, as a visual aid, you can see their footprint, and that easily fits here, and then these two lots in the back being two acres clearly have more than ample room for all of the home and infrastructure that goes along with it.
Thank you.
Nelson?
Yeah, I have one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I wonder if we could get a little explanation of the staff memo on page two, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down begins with "this would be done" before the ZBA. I didn't quite understand what you were trying to tell us there, Robert. Could you elaborate a little bit on some of those...
Sure.
Options, thank you.
Okay, so what I was trying to explain there is that the applicant would need to, in this case, be Old Blood, Old Blood Road being a class six road, statute declares that the governing body has to issue or authorize the issuance of building permits in that case. Tim Thompson informed me that the ZBA actually has that jurisdiction here, so in this case, the applicant would have to go to the ZBA to, to get the building, the authorization to have building permits issued on the back two lots if everything was all approved. So, that's what I was kind of trying to clarify there.
Okay, that's all that that means.
So what, may I sort of interpret, if you, what you're saying is that if nobody does anything, the administrative decision from the, from the town will be that you can't do it because it's class six.
Correct.
So, they're not going to get a variance, they're actually going to get an override of, of the Community Development Office.
Yeah, it would be an appeal administrative decision, yeah.
Okay, I get that. You with me?
Well, there's a question that comes after the subdivision, they couldn't ask for a building permit without the subdivision.
Right.
But, but what he's saying is, if he don't, if nothing gets done, the town, the Community Development Department, Planning Department, and Planning and Zoning Officer will refuse to allow this to happen because it's a class six road. So, if you like, they've already said that, it's a class six road, you can't do this. So now they've got to go to the ZBA, and please tell me if I get it wrong, but as I understand it, they have to go to the ZBA to have the planning and zoning decision overturned, which then allows them to come back to us for subdivision and the rest of it.
But would they not first have to go and get approval for this subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. So, you need two trips to the ZBA.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I wanted to point out.
Yes, sorry, I missed, yes, you're right.
Okay, all right.
Wow, that'll keep the ZBA busy for a week or two. Trouble is, they'll, they'll probably pass it in one minute, but go on.
It's a cold weekend. And I just want to clarify, yes, indeed, that is the process, it's, you know, this is, like I said, an informal discussion to introduce the approach we're pursuing. First off, after this, we have to go to the zoning board for the definition of frontage, not that we're seeking less frontage, but it's frontage on a class six road, variance required. If we were so fortunate to get that variance, we would come back before your board for the subdivision. Then, if and when some time in the future, somebody's ready to get a building permit, they're going to get an administrative decision that a building permit is not available, please go back to the zoning board to get one.
Yeah, just wanted to be clear.
Thank you. Ken, have you got, have you had enough from us, from the public, or is it...
Yes, obviously, before we go to the zoning board, we needed to afford you opportunities to weigh in and have any abutters weigh in too, so I'm comfortable at this point, I think everybody knows the process and what we're seeking, and so, at this point, I think we're fine.
Thank you. For the members of the public, you should know that although they've had this meeting with us tonight, that before they go, come back to us for taking the matter further, there will be another, another formal meeting, and in this case, you will be notified as abutters, and by the usual process, if you're not an abutter, you just get it from the town hall or on the website, you will know that this matter will come up again, and you will get proper and formal notifications so that you are able to come and join us at those point in time. Up to now, now, thank you for your participation this evening.
Thank you very much.
And at which point, thank you, Ken, and I shall very happily give my noteworthy chairman the gavel back again.
Thank you. For that, that brings us to item four on our agenda, which is Brett Ciklik for Prime Alternative Treatment Center as the applicant, and Skyline Mall LLC as the owner, and this is review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for an application for a conditional use permit and waiver of full site plan review to permit a medical cannabis alternative treatment center, non-cultivation. The site is located at 380 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Oxford Conservation Districts, tax map 4D3, Lot 4. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
No, yeah, I'd just say, let him go.
Ready, set, go. Introduce yourself, please.
Absolutely.
Although we've met you before.
That's right.
And tell us what we got in front of us today.
Certainly, so my name is Brett Ciklik, I am the COO of Prime Alternative Treatment Center, to my right is John Beijen, who is the Director of Security for Prime Alternative Treatment Center. We appreciate the opportunity to come and speak in front of you again today.
We appreciate the opportunity to come and speak in front of you again today. Really not much has changed, other than the location of the facility that we're proposing for the alternative treatment center. As you are all aware, we did withdraw our application for one oh five Daniel Webster Highway and are now pursuing three eighty Daniel Webster Highway, which is the Skyline Mall. We believe that the location is more than suitable for our application. We also believe that there are more than a significant amount of parking spaces to accommodate the patients that will be utilizing the alternative treatment center. The total number of employees has not changed for the project, it still stands at ten. The hours of operation that we are proposing, Monday through Saturday, ten AM to eight PM, have not changed at all. The location is not within a pre-existing drug-free school zone, and we do intend, obviously, to meet all of the criteria that the town is requiring in order to allow us to operate in the town of Merrimack. So that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Ciklik. Have the other tenants in Skyline Mall been made aware of the hearing tonight, the proceedings? They're not technically a butter, so they wouldn't have received but, butter notification, but are they aware?
Um, I believe some are aware. I know that there is one of the tenants here present tonight, but I believe that some of them are aware, correct.
What are the other businesses that are there in Skyline Mall now?
There is a dry cleaner, there is a catering and restaurant, there is a pet salon, there is a H and R block, there is a pizza restaurant, and I believe there is a carpet cleaner as well.
Okay.
And a nail salon, I'm sorry.
Now, you mentioned pretty quickly parking, and I know that that's touched on in the memo a little bit, and the staff's member does this calculation based on retail space, but you've mentioned ten employees. And that's a little bit different than what a normal retail space might have in it at a time.
Certainly.
But you got ten total spaces, how do we make that work?
Well, we believe that the others, the other spaces that are for the, for the facility should be enough to handle the traffic of patients that we have coming through the, the facility, understanding that, you know, they're not going to be coming all at one point in time, but periodically throughout the day.
I understand that when a development like Skyline Mall gets developed initially, they've got a calculation that determines how many spaces they need for the whole parcel, and that's kind of outlined in the staff memo, you probably read it. And they came up with ninety-something, and I think they built a hundred and ten or something like that. But as each one of those tenants comes forward, some portion of those are allocated for their business and for their use. And so if your ten are going to your employees, or maybe mostly to your employees and a couple, and you start to use beyond your ten, you're taking away from your neighbors' customers' access to their parcel.
Understood.
So how do we make that work?
You know, I, I think it's one of those situations where we'd be happy to reduce the amount of employees that are parking in the spots, obviously without interfering with our employees and their ability to get to work. So I'm sure that there's a way for us to reduce the amount of spots that we take from an employment standpoint to allow for our patients to better access the facilities and the parking spots that are available.
In situations like this, in the past, we have had applicants commit to having their employees park in the back or the most remote spaces, the ones that are least likely for the consumers, and I didn't look at the site to see if there is that kind of a layout or that situation. So there are some parking spaces out back behind the building.
Right, plus down here, and some down there. And, and these are generally, except for the high use times for the-
Pizza place.
For the pizza place are, are empty.
So if that was part of a decision by the board to suggest that you instruct all your employees or designate the employee parking in the back, or on the end, that wouldn't be a problem for you?
Not whatsoever, no. We're more than willing to accommodate that.
What, what was behind the decision to switch sites? Because I was really fond of your old choices.
Certainly. You know, really, the, the rental price for the property was a little steep, in our opinion, and the condition of the building was not anywhere close to what we expected it to be. And unfortunately, the landlord or the owner of the building was not willing to bring it up to good working condition, which is something that we asked for. In this scenario, the building is in wonderful condition. There was a roof renovation that was done within the past couple of years. The HVAC is in good working order, whereas at the other property, there were many issues that were discovered.
Okay. Other members of the board have any questions or comments? Nelson?
A few comments. Mr. Chairman, first of all, the site plan we received didn't show the location of your site. I know you're going on Chili Willie's place, but I know that, but it doesn't show on this plan.
I apologize for that.
The plan should show that.
Okay.
The other thing is, this plan, we don't have a copy of the original plan to look at, Mr. Chairman, that was something that-
The original plan for this site, or from?
The approved plan that exists today for this site. Just, in my opinion, to be sure that we've, we've captured all of the notes and stipulations that might have been on that original plan, on this plan, I didn't get an opportunity to review it from that point of view. And, so, that's a little concern to me. And I would hope that if, in fact, we approve this thing, that you would take special care, you and your secretary would take special care to, to verify that we haven't left something off by adopting this new plan in place of the old one.
No, I agree with you completely. Robert, does your file happen to have the originally approved site plan with you?
I don't, we only brought the most recent one for the other facility, just in case. But I'm sure, I'm sure we have it in our records.
Okay. So you understand what Nelson's getting at, we want to make sure, whatever we talked about with the approval of Skyline Mall from the beginning, we're staying consistent with that.
Yep, absolutely.
Nelson, have you comments?
Okay, just one more thing with regard to the, the security plan. I think it's probably the same as the one before, at least as far as I could tell. I didn't compare them line by line. But our police have reviewed this?
Correct, and they have given approval for it as well.
They have, okay. I was concerned about one page, the pages are numbered now, that's good. There was a, there was a place in here where if you had a violation, you were going to notify the state right away, but no mention of notifying the local police. And if I can, if you want to do something else for a little bit, I'll find where that was, Mr. Chairman, I didn't take down the page number that appeared on.
Other comments or questions?
It's my page six, Nelson.
Thank you.
I'm-
About halfway, two thirds of the way down.
There's two things, I mean, this building, not your particular way you are, but this building, some, was broken into a number of years ago, I remember somebody went through the roof, and they broke in through the roof. But I'm more worried, actually, when you say, when you say a vault, having got it, looked into the building, I mean, you're, you're gonna build something in there, which that's not like the vault that was in the DC, the, the other building, you're just building, what, a steel wall? I mean, I'm worried about somebody coming through the sidewall into your vault and helping themselves, and that's what worried me. What is that vault, how secure is it, what are you doing to ensure that the building isn't broken into? Unfortunately, being on the end, you're the most vulnerable.
Certainly. So the vault is a prefabricated vault from a company called Custom Vault, and they do vaults for not only banks, but also for industry as well. So it is, I believe, a class two rated DEA certified vault. So, you know, meant to obviously hold and secure products of a very serious nature. And it will be a six-sided vault, because we understand our, our close proximity to an outside wall, we want to ensure that nobody, nobody would be able to tunnel in underneath as well.
Yes.
So it will be secured from all sides. So we've gone to great length to find the right vault versus just building a, a room and then trying to put, you know, let's say, some type of gun safe in there, or something along those lines, we've, you know, we'll be having a prefabricated vault.
But somebody with a fairly large piece of equipment could simply back into that wall, and winch your vault onto the back of a low loader and go, couldn't they?
Well, they could, but then they're gonna appear on stupid criminals because they're Carl Bragg and all.
There are plenty of stupid criminals around.
You said DEA certified vault, are you talking about the, the kind of vault that would be at Walgreens or whatever for their medications and judges? Okay. So it's similar to what they've got? What goes into a DEA certification? I've never heard the term before.
Well, there's certain criteria that one was, one must meet if they are holding scheduled drugs, which obviously, in our case, we are. So in order to meet the criteria, if we were, let's say, you know, to be investigated or to be, I guess, inspected by the DEA, the, the vault would meet their criteria. So if there's literature that you would like to see relative to the vault, that is something that we could more than happily produce for you.
Now, I'm looking at this plan here, and I'm looking at the purple dots are the inside cameras and the pink dots are outside cameras, so the, every direction, the vault's got a camera on it.
Correct.
Several.
If I could just say a few words too.
Sure.
Again, my name is John Beijen, I'm the Security Director for Prime. The, the vault is also alarmed, almost entirely separate than the existing structure. Without getting into too many detail in public record, the vault itself has many advanced type of anti-theft features to include vibration sensors, motion detectors around the vault. So if you do try to penetrate the vault from an exterior wall, from the roof, from the side, there are vibration sensors that will detect any type of attempted penetration.
That's what I wanted to hear.
So, so that will obviously trigger the alarm, that will notify the police. We're certainly confident in the response times of the police department that by the time anyone were to attempt to penetrate that vault, we would have probably half the Merrimack Police Department there.
Potentially so. Now, I'm remembering the layout that you had with the other proposal that we saw last time, and I'm looking at this one, and it looks like you've got the consultation area kind of towards the back, not that far from the vault, and also these two restrooms, which I assume would be available to the public. When we were talking about the DCU building, it seemed like there wasn't an, an opportunity for the public to get that close to your secured areas. What went into the thinking with this layout?
So we, we put another room, which would have another layer of security outside of the vault to prevent that, so that is secured access to get into the area where the vault will exist, and then there's another layer to actually get into the vault. So it, it's not direct access. You know, really, we, we felt comfortable with the location of the bathrooms, with the location of the vault, understanding that there would be multiple layers that someone would have to go through to access that area, and, and certainly, there's only key employees that would be allowed back there.
So from the public's standpoint, if they're gonna come and get some of your product, they're getting it from this area in the middle, kind of dispensary?
Correct.
So that's a counter and they have some transaction going on there?
Correct.
What's the big open space in the middle that's labeled Patient Lounge? What's, what activity goes on there?
That's just a waiting area for patients to be seen at the retail counter.
They have a waiting area out front, or, I don't get the reason for having that, because I don't remember that being a part of the-
Sure.
-other plan.
And the reason why it wasn't was because we didn't have the space to accommodate that at the DCU bank, whereas here we do. You know, we understand that there might be caregivers who have traveled with patients who are allowed into the facility, that could wait in the outside area, but don't necessarily need to come into the patient lounge area where a transaction might occur. So we've provided ample space for those people outside, as well as if, you know, perhaps someone is coming in for the first time and needs to fill out their intake application, they would be able to do so in that waiting area before being let back to be served by one of our ATC agents.
So the consultation area, that dashed line is not to be a actual wall, that's just kind of an area designation?
Correct.
So that'll be open? And the dispensary is essentially a counter space, so the patient lounge and dispensary and consultation area is all really kind of a open concept?
Correct.
How many patients do you think that are gonna be in there? Because altogether, that's about the size of this room. It's a big space.
It is, correct.
To be in the middle there. How many patients would you think are kind of in that, inside your, past the first waiting room, and waiting to get their whatever?
Sure. I would say at the most, between six to ten people, just given that there would probably be one to two people at the consultation area, one to two people waiting in the middle area, and then hopefully four people being seen at the actual retail counter.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I had one more I missed. There's a lot of cameras all over. Where are those cameras being monitored or watched, or?
There is, as you enter the facility, there is that, that waiting room. There is a security slash office to the, to the right there, where there will be security camera monitoring there. We also have an off-site facility and another office where all those cameras will be able to viewed off-site, as well as onsite. So there'll, there'll be a layer of the front desk person will be obviously monitoring the cameras. However, we also have other security staff that can be monitoring that above that as well. So at any one time, you will have the one person at the front desk, and potentially a second, or maybe even a third person overseeing the cameras from an off-site location.
Okay, it isn't clear, this, the security that's in the front, right in the front of the building, there's a wall there, so they don't see what's directly, what's going on in the conference room, right? But they look at it, this orange block is the monitor, and is somebody in there all the time, just in that room?
Because they have to let people into the facility.
That's the, kind of the front, I guess, you call them, I'd say greeter, but they're the ones who will be allowing people into the facility.
Is there some kind of a glass wall or someplace where they can talk to these people?
Correct.
Yeah, bullet resistant glass.
Yeah.
There'd be a, a, kind of a reinforced wall to the entrance to that room, and will also have an ability, sort of like, I guess you'd call it, a, a bank where you have a transaction window, and will also have the ability to, to open that, that bulletproof glass in the event that we want to. So, so there's several ways to communicate into that area.
Yeah, it just isn't clear from this picture that you had that in mind, okay.
So in your security plan, other than the cameras that are shown on this diagram, where are sort of the live and capable human being security people going to be?
In, in, in that front reception desk area.
In that room right there? Anywhere else would there be? Is there one person or two people?
Typically, typically be one at that desk, and then myself, there's, will be there potentially, but not all the time, every day. So there'd be one with potentially two, depending on what's going on that day.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, one more. I, I went through the security plan too, and I, I find it very comprehensive. You have a lot of equipment here, and there's a lot of procedures in place. Does it get tested before you go live?
This does, absolutely.
Is there a test plan? Or will there be a test plan?
There, there will be, correct.
Any chance that we can get to see that?
Certainly.
Okay. Who, who will actually do the test?
It'll be a combination of, of John and ISG, and the backup security company as well, because it is a state requirement.
It, it actually tested, the whole, the whole alarm system will be tested monthly, and that'll be recorded, kept on file. For every time, if there's a failure, it'll be recorded, if there's repairs, it's recorded. So we'll be tested before going live, and then every month thereafter, we'll be tested as well.
Well, I was thinking more than just the security, though, the, the whole auditing capability, everything. How you, how you record product coming in, how you record product going out, all the equipment.
Certainly.
And, and that's part of our state inspection process as well.
Right, okay, okay.
They have to ensure that we are meeting the state requirements. They test us, they come in, they do the final inspection. If we do not pass, if we're, so, you know, if we're kind of not meeting one section of the requirements, they will, they will not obviously issue our, our permit to operate.
Okay, so the state actually will be doing that testing, yeah? Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Are deliveries gonna be made during business hours or off-hours?
The, the preference is certainly off-hours, and to be done on a random basis. Certainly, delivery with, without patients being in, in, in the actual dispensary area is a preferred method. In the event that, will there never be a, a delivery during business hours? I can't guarantee that, but our scheduled delivery system will be off-hours, either before, preferably before, because of daylight hours before the business opens.
What do you anticipate in terms of the frequency of deliveries?
Depends on quantity of patients. At this point in the beginning, I'd say probably weekly, one, one per week, obviously if the patient demand picks up. We have a vehicle that, you know, depending on the size of the vehicle, that we can carry sufficient amounts, however, to limit our exposure. We certainly do not want to, to, to load the vehicle to its capacity. Every time you move the product, there's exposure, so we want to limit that, how much we're exposed when we transport it from point A to point B.[1774.02]
In terms of how much is delivered at a time, is it delivered like in a big truck or a van? Or, I mean, is it 10 boxes? Is it two boxes?
At this point, we're looking at a delivery van. Inside the delivery van is a secured cargo area. That's a, it's kind of a prefabricated vault specifically for our use. That's locked. It's locked at our cultivation site. Will be delivered, the security officer in the van, the technician in the van, don't have access to the product. Until they arrive at the facility, well, the security officer there then have the key to get into that vehicle. So once the vehicle is in between locations, there's no access, it's a secured vault in the van, and then when he gets there, security would meet him, bring the product inside. The inventory would be confirmed, gets the manifest to ensure that they're receiving what the product said they're going to receive, and then put directly into the vault.
I was sort of asking volume for, just to understand, how long does it take to unload? Is it two boxes that have to get carried in, and we're done in a few seconds?
A dozen maybe, tops, probably.
At most, especially early on, just because of our expectation of patient demand. But there's always someone who's remaining in the van at all times, that is a state requirement, and then the other person will be responsible, in addition with the dispensary management and security to bring the product into the facility.
I know that we're getting into greater detail on some of these security issues with this site over the other site, but I think that you've got, on the new Skyline Mall site, the potential for there to be traffic unrelated to your business, but in very, very close proximity, which kind of changes what you have to do and what you have to watch for.
Certainly.
And that's why I think it's a lot different than when you're the only building on the site. So I definitely want to hear from the public, but I have to tell you that I liked your old site a lot better.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is if somebody does anything naughty on to them on that site, it's damn hard to get along that part of D W Highway with all the traffic lights and all the rest of it. It'll be much more difficult to get away than it would have been elsewhere. But that's just me.
And it's closer to the police station, too, I suppose, if you want to sort of add up all of it.
Are we going to?
The escape is still southbound. The escape is still southbound.
Yeah. I mean, do you want us to make a motion to consider this?
Yeah, I guess we do have to decide. Well, we're doing the C U P first, which doesn't require completeness. It just requires consideration of it, and so we should probably have a public hearing related to the C U P.
All right.
And then do the site plan separate. Robert, am I correct on that procedure?
Yep.
If I'm ever incorrect, just speak up. Don't let me step in it. Are there other comments or questions by members of the board before we open up to the public on the C U P piece of the puzzle? All right, are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in and tell us what their thoughts are on the conditional use permit piece of it? And for the benefit of anyone who's wondering what that means, the site plan is sort of where we count parking spaces and lighting and all of that stuff. And the C U P is where we say that they've met the standards to have a security plan, that there's not going to be using product on the site, and the other four criteria that are listed. So, anyone wish to weigh in? Please come forward. I can certainly use this microphone, or if you'd like to sit at the table, we'll definitely get these guys to clear away for you. Whatever's best for you. Don't forget to sign in on the clipboard. Take your time to do that. So please introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like us to know.
Hi, my name is John Paul. I'm representing Kahuna's Cafe and Grill, Kahuna's Catering. We're located in the center of the plaza. What's really unique about what these gentlemen are bringing kind of coincides with what we have going on, meaning that the food that we're providing is very clean, is very clean. We're bringing in organic produce, we're having juices, smoothies. What's happened is, it's a really niche market that what we're doing, and we have a lot of clients that are actively dying of cancer, H I V, AIDS positive, parents that are treating their children or their spouses for anxiety. We follow a philosophy that let thy food be my medicine and my medicine be thy food. Where it relates is, we really believe that the health of anybody starts with the mother. Starts with the mother earth, and you really want to be able to have clean products going into your body. Now, unlike many misconceptions of the use of marijuana, or in a dispensary form, this isn't about teenagers getting high or adults going out for recreational use and making poor decisions. These are about people who are suffering serious illnesses. I felt compelled to reach out to the dispensary to say, welcome. And because the mission is the same, this is a humanitarian issue, where I guess it'd just be for the record for Kahuna's Catering, Kahuna's Cafe and Grill, just to say that we're very sick people right now. We have very sick youth, and there needs to be some type of alternative treatments than sticking a bunch of pills down their throat and hoping for the best, and hoping that the side effects aren't going to be the ones to kill them. Let's give a quick story. My father, when he was born, my great-grandmother was an Abenaki Native American, and she believed that when he was born, modern medicine saved him. She believed that his soul was not ready to walk this earth. He was very sick his whole life. What kept him alive was a clean diet and being active. But with that came a lot of causes from the medications that he had to take. He was one of the longest living lung transplants in the world of his time. Eating clean helped him sustain his life for a long time. However, the nausea, the pain, the other effects from the medication that was keeping him alive, if there was something at the time to help him relieve some of that or get some of that appetite back, I wish my father was still here to at least be able to suggest an option. So again, it's just, it's something really exciting to know that in one place, you're going to be able to get something, and it's going to nourish your body. And if you are, have other types of medical illnesses, then there's going to be another spot in the plaza for you to get those, those needs. So that's what I wanted to address the board, and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much for your indication of support. I appreciate it. Any others who wish to weigh in? Any member of the public? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and that leaves it for the board to consider what to do with the conditional use permit. Any thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the C U P for this project.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion? Second by Jeff Sebring. Any discussion? Nelson?
Just a couple of comments. I was looking over the comments from the staff regarding the C U P, and there's a few things that are kind of open, because the fire was asked for a response. The response was given, but fire has not responded to the response kind of thing. So I think our motion should be conditioned upon those items that are still outstanding in the memo of February the 10th from Gillian Harris. Would that be proper, Robert?
Yes, it would.
Yeah. I'm looking particularly, Mr. Chairman, at item number four, the second bullet, and the second sentence, where it says, "Staff recommends that the applicant confirm that these concerns are addressed as a condition of approval." I just wanted to call attention to that.
No, that makes sense. So to clarify Nelson's point for Alastair and Jeff who made and seconded the motion, is it your intent that your motion include any of the conditions outlined in the staff's memo?
Well, I sort of felt, having listened to the presentation today, and I felt that those concerns had been addressed. But if everybody feels strongly that they haven't been quite well enough, then I'll go with the flow.
I think the applicant thinks he has addressed them.
Well, that's what I think.
Maybe he has.
I think the applicant thinks he's addressed them.
Yeah.
And therefore, that's why I don't see a condition, any need for the conditions on the C U P. But that's my opinion.
Well, I'd like to close the loop.
All right.
I agree with Alastair with respect to the Police Department concerns, and there's a clear statement from Chief Doyle that the security plan as presented is sufficient. With the fire plan, we haven't really had that discussion as to what those concerns were, or how they've been addressed, and whether Chief Courier is happy. So that's, I think, what Nelson was getting at.
Exactly.
Well, that's the only one that Nelson was talking about here. Are there other conditions in here?
That's the only one that caught my eye as being still open.
Yeah, I don't see any others.
Well, given that this building has got all sorts of fire equipment, detection, and everything else there now, and has been, from Chili Willies and whatever else was there before, I personally am not anticipating that Chief Courier is going to have any concerns.
I think that you're probably right, but that makes it even easier to get Chief Courier to give it ahead, nod, and we'll be done with this.
All right. If that is the will of everybody else, I would be happy to include that we asked a, for this, a sign-off from the fire chief.
Is that consistent with your seconded motion? Any other discussion on that? Let's see. We're seven now, but we've still got all of our alternates appointed to fill correct positions. So all those in favor of granting the conditional use permit with the single condition outlined in the staff's memo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to grant the conditional use permit. That brings us to site plan. There's a request by the applicant to, well, first we've got to decide if the application's complete.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we consider that this application is complete as recommended by the staff.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion?
Second.
Second by Desiree. Any discussion on completeness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero for completeness. The applicants requested the waiver of full site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the waiver of full site plan review as nothing that the applicant is doing changes the outlook, the outside of the building at all. All his work is associated with the inside, apart from sticking a few camera brackets, I guess, on the outside.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion?
Second.
Second by Jeff Sebring. I have a question for the applicant on that general topic. I saw that you're adding cameras to the outside, which really aren't an issue for site plan review, but are you adding any lights outside?
No.
No change in lighting?
I went to the facility a week or two ago. I feel the lighting is sufficient for surveillance under the current conditions. We wouldn't need to change any of those conditions.
Okay, so no lighting added. Okay, any other questions or comments on?
Just one other comment, Mr. Chairman, which I made earlier, and that is that I would like, at the time of signing of the plan, that you review this plan against the existing approved plan, and be sure we've covered all the things that should be.
All the conditions on it.
All the conditions that were on that plan, and then copy it over.
Okay. That certainly makes sense to me. So the decision is, the motion is to waive full site plan review. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. Since this is technically a separate piece of the puzzle, we'll have a second public hearing and see if there's any other abutters who wish to weigh in on the site plan issues, which are lighting and traffic and the layout of the site and those sorts of things. Anybody have any information they'd like to offer the board to consider on that? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. I remain concerned about the parking, because I think that you may be impacting your neighbors. However, I think that you do meet the retail parking regulations, and if you're willing to designate that your employees park in the back, I think that everybody that might have gone to that mall recently hasn't sort of pulled in and said, "There's no place for me to park." There's always someplace to be. And so I could live with that. Are there other items of discussion that people want to have with respect to site plan? Seeing none, what's the will of the board with respect to final disposition of the application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant a final approval for the application to put the prime alternative treatment sensor into the Skyline Mall in the end unit.
Subject to the conditions in the staff's.
Along with the conditions of the February the 10th, and the further condition that you've highlighted, which is that the applicant will instruct his staff to park at the back.
And Nelson's condition about looking at the old plan?
Oh, of course. That's more really a technical issue for us rather than for the.
Yeah.
It's really a technical.
The plan has to be modified to show the location of the site.
Yes, you're quite right. Yes.
With all of that, is there a second for Alastair's compound motion? Desiree beat you to it, so his fault is seconding it. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of granting final approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. So you are all set with those conditions, and you'll get a letter from the staff that outlines what you've got to do for all of those conditions. Thank you for coming back to the presentation. I wish the other site had worked out, because I really did like it better, but you did meet all the conditions for this site, so.
Yeah, and I hope that Chief Doyle's visit to our facility in Connecticut towards the latter part of this week will help kind of share some color. Just because the facility down there is in a strip mall, very, very similar to the Skyline Mall. We've been operating there for 18 months and have not had any issues from, you know, other tenants being in close proximity from a security standpoint. So, you know, I hope that word gets back to you guys, just to make you feel more comfortable.
I don't know that if there's an official route for that information to get back to us, because once we're done with this, we're done with it.
Sure.
But Chief Doyle's satisfaction with your security plan meant all the world here, because if he hadn't have given you that, there's no way I'd support this.
Understood.
That made a big deal. So whatever you've had for meetings and conversations and communications with him were very, very important and meaningful.
Okay.
And I am glad that he's going to go visit your facility.
Likewise.
Yeah, that puts a lot of confidence in him. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That brings us to item five on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any other items of concern?
I would just, Mr. Chairman, I have brought this to the attention of the Community Development Director. Some of you may not have seen that when we were doing Flatley's, there was a hope, I think that's the word, that F W Webb would move their facility from Amherst onto the Flatley site. For those of you who don't know, F W Webb has now signed an agreement to go on to the Petting Grill Development, which is in Londonderry, just the far side of the airport access road, as if you like, going from our side to their side. So that is a dead duck.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other items of concern? That brings us to item six on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes of February 2nd, 2016. What's the will of the board with respect to those minutes?
I move that we approve them as written. I don't have any comments.
Desiree moves to approve as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mahon. Any discussion?
Something.
Hearing none?
Nelson, keep going. I don't know what I did with my set, so I had to borrow Desiree's. If you will bear with me.
Of course we will.
It had to do with the discussion on page two, and down around line 15 or thereabouts, I had mentioned at that meeting to Mr. Shewery that, or to everyone, that we should, that the original intent was that the Department of Public Works would approve the easement. The easement was not shown on the plan clearly, and I wanted to be sure that it would be. I was told that it would be, and I wanted, I mentioned at the meeting that I wanted Public Works to look at it after it was finally shown on the plan, to be sure it was what they needed to do the job.
Okay.
Okay? And that didn't get in the minutes.
Well, it says P W D has made its review.
They did.
And it also says they must approve on 18 and 19.
But this is different. I want them to, they never saw it. They said, "Yeah, we want to do this."
Oh, I see.
But it's not shown on the plan yet. And so I want to be sure what gets on the plan is what they wanted, what they needed to do that job.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm reading on mine is the discussion, the first few lines, and then I get to line 18. The Public Works Department must approve. Tim Thompson explained the lines are very faint, don't show on the planning board's copy. Staff will be sure they show on the final plan. No planning board action is necessary tonight. Present condition number 11 on approval is satisfied. So what wording choices would you do differently there? Public Works Department must approve of a plan that shows the lines?
Easement plan.
Must approve of the easement plan?
The easement, yeah.
Okay, so we just add those couple of words to the Public Works Department?
Yeah.
P W D must approve the easement plan.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on those minutes?
I did say it. I just didn't.
No, you did. You were very clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other minutes, questions? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero.
Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second to adjourn? Nelson?
And you and I have some plans to sign if you.
There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Don't forget to turn your microphones off, and thank you, everyone.